So, good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our town meeting information session. We have three parts to this tonight: Town Meeting 101, Municipal Finance 101, and we're debuting a new Land Use 101, where we're gonna talk a little bit about land use, which seems to come up at every town meeting. It's one of the more complicated items that town meeting will deal with. If you don't know me, my name is Tony Mizuko. I'm the Town Manager. I'm gonna introduce Jerry Slater, who is our Moderator, Alan Slater, who is Chair of the Finance Commission. We have also here with us Mary Wu Follin, who's our Town Clerk, and Bill Plasko, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, as well as a number of other town staff. So, we're gonna take questions during the presentation. If you have a question, just throw your hand up. If we get a lot of them, we'll just pause and go toward the end. But with that, I'm gonna turn right over to the moderator, start right on time. And John will manage the online folks. Madam Moderator, floor is yours.
Thank you. Hey, everybody. So, Tony's actually starting with one of the best things that you can learn tonight, which is, we will try as best we can, we will always start on time. We can't start the business of town meeting until we have a quorum, but we can certainly start the plenarys. And so, I ask you right now, if you can learn nothing else in this session, learn to, it's kind of like band camp. If you're on time, you're late. If you're early, you're on time. So, we'll go ahead with that. So, I'm also gonna reference some other sessions that are coming up. John, if you'd go back to that, because I think we'll constantly be talking about that. Coming up on the 24th will be a budget overview for the school department, shared costs and facilities. On the 26th will be an additional budget overview. And again, the annual town meeting will be all about the budget, so this is really good prep stuff on general government, public safety, community services, and culture and recreation. Then, on the 27th will be an information session on the special town meeting warrant and the Community Preservation Act articles. And then, the town meeting begins on May 8th. So, I guess we should say, also, if you have your cellphone with you, if you can put it on silence, that would be awesome as well. A big thank you to NCM Tonight, who's recording this. And you'll be able to, if you're missing tonight's session, if you're not in the hall with us or online, you can watch us on demand through Norwood Community Media, which, and you can watch it over and over again. So, with that, let me go through what we're gonna be covering with today's agenda of town meeting. And again, we're gonna make this very interactive and very informal. Really, the purpose of the session today is hopefully giving you, whether you're a new town meeting member or an existing town meeting member, some basic information on how town meeting is run, what to expect, where to go for additional resources. In addition, tonight, we're, as Tony said, we're also gonna have a primer on municipal finance. And our Chairman of the FinCom is gonna take you through that. And we also have our Director of Finance, Meg LeMay, is in the room as well. And then, Land Use 101, which is going to be, I think, Tony and Sarah Bouchard are Acting Town Planner. We'll talk about that. So, all very, very important stuff. From the town meeting standpoint, we're gonna take you through the different types of town meeting, kind of the cadence of the calendar of town meeting, rules of procedure, and where to go to see our rules of procedure. Also, the different types of the warrant, motions and votes. And then, the all-important registering to speak, if you want to do that as well. We'll have the Town Clerk, Mary Wu Follin, talk to you a little bit about what happens before, during, and after town meeting. And the Clerk's Office does an amazing job of making sure that everything runs smoothly. And then, as Tony mentioned as well, Board of Selectmen Chairman Emeritus, Bill Plasko, will talk about the role of the Selectmen. And Mr. Slater will talk about the role of the FinCom during town meeting. So, that'll, that'll take us through. John, if you'd go ahead? All right. You're elected to town meeting. You're, you're here. When you walk into the hall downstairs, so the Paul Alberta Music Hall, which is the auditorium, that's where town meeting will take place. There's something that will happen before, as you're walking into the hall. Mary Wu will take you through that. But it's kind of a pretty impressive auditorium, to say the least. There are over 800 seats, I believe, in the auditorium, so there's plenty of room to spread out. We actually have 266 elected town meeting members. So, as far as social distancing goes and everything else, you'll be, you're fine there. There is no assigned seating. But what I ask is, is you can see that scene. So, if you reverse the scene, which we're, we're not going to do, I'm looking at you all from the stage. And as much as we try to put me up on a little stage and a podium and everything else, the people way in the back of the auditorium, to me, look like raisins. And the lighting, actually, which is beautiful for a performance onstage, not so good when you're in the back of the auditorium. So, we asked the town meeting members, if you're an elected town meeting member, you sit towards the front, the front section, and you can see there's plenty of seating there. I do know that some folks have their, their preference to sit in the back. And I see a couple of people smiling about that, which is, which is fine. But if you can sit near the front of the back, that would be really helpful. We have the non-town meeting members. We ask them to sit in the wayback. And again, that way, we could recognize town meeting members for votes. I can recognize, I can actually see you. And I'll be honest with you, it's, it is tough to see in the back of that auditorium, as people who sat there can attest. I wanted to give you a quote, "Town meeting is the wisest invention ever devised by any person for the perfect exercise of self-government and its self-preservation." Thomas Jefferson. It's actually in your, all of you would have received from the League of Women Voters. Thank you very much, League of Women Voters, Introduction to Town Meeting. It's right in there. And I think that says it all. It's a, it's a privilege that we have this form of government. It was basically established in 1872. So, a little bit of a history lesson, but when the town of Norwood broke off from Dedham, we received our first charter. And by an act of Massachusetts General Court, we established town meeting, a town meeting form of government. That was then revised due to a lot of different changes that happened since 1872 into, and again, by an act of Mass General Court, established representative town meeting, which is what we currently have. And what representative town meeting is, and John, if we go to the next page, it's where we have elected representatives from our nine different voting, whoop, nine, yeah, nine different voting districts. So, again, I mentioned it was 266. Quorum, or ours, our rules, is 50% plus one. So, that would, doing math, would be 134. Correct, Madam Clerk? Currently, we have 266. We have some unopened seats. Basically, it's 1.5% of registered voters, but not more than 300. This is, again, by the act that established our representative town meeting. Different types of town meeting. So, we're talking about the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting is always the second Monday in May. That is established by our bylaws. The Selectmen will officially set that, and they have, so we'll all be gathering on May 9th? May 8th? Maybe I'll be there on May 9th? On May 8th? I always remember, because it is, again, is it the day after Mother's Day this year?
Second day.
No, not this year.
Always the second Monday in May.
Okay. Second Monday, always the second Monday. And the annual town meeting is where we take the budget. So, that's the main part of annual town meeting. It's a pretty important part, obviously, of your representation. We will go through the entire budget. There also may be a special, and I will tell you, spoiler alert, there will be a special this time. And the special, when it is combined with the annual town meeting, we may actually set the annual town meeting, adjourn the annual town meeting, take on the special for the business that will be happening there, especially during annual town meeting. If there are any money articles on the special town meeting, it has an effect on the budget for the coming year. So, and I, again, will be doing that. I believe, Mr. Plasko and Mr. Mizuko, we are going to go with the special first, this time of the week. Other specials that you can expect with the regular cadence is, there is always a special in the fall that's normally around the October-November-ish timeframe, that the headliner there is going to be the capital budget. So, again, you can expect that. And what we are trying to establish is a winter town meeting. And that will roughly be in the March timeframe to deal with zoning articles. And again, that way, it kind of gives you an idea of what to expect, what the cadence is, what the timing is. Specials are always set by the Board of Selectmen. Meetings are always on Monday and Thursday. The times are set by the Selectmen, but I will tell you that our current practice is for the meetings to start at 6:30. And then, by our bylaw, meeting sessions must end by 10:30, unless, as determined by the moderator, and I can tell you, the moderator doesn't like to stay up late, that the business can be completed within a reasonable extension beyond 10:30. All right. I don't see any questions, so let's move on, John, if you don't mind. The rules of town meeting. So, we are very, very fortunate in Norwood. And as a moderator, I belong to the Mass Moderators Association, a very exciting group of moderators from all over the state, the Commonwealth. But actually, it's, it's a pretty neat group, because you find out about different practices in, in different communities, what works well, what doesn't work well, and things that somebody, a moderator, one moderator may utilize in one community that might be good for us. Our rules, and we are extremely fortunate in this, are actually right within our bylaws. So, Town Clerk will give you these, and she'll explain when she comes up here. Section, actually, Article 34 of the bylaws are all our rules of town meeting. And that includes meeting and dates, what constitutes the quorum, the rules of debate. And again, any registered voter in town can speak on a particular subject, on a motion, but only town meeting members can vote, which is, again, another reason why we're trying to have you sit more towards the front. Time limits. So, if we didn't have time limits, I can tell you, we would definitely not be ending by 10:30. Every speaker has a five-minute time limit. The body can vote to give them a one-time extension. If you are proponent of a particular article that is being presented, you're allowed to have 10 minutes. And again, that's with the same deal with an one-time extension. That, again, is in our bylaws, and we're fortunate for that. The different types of motions that we have. And again, I understand, you know, first time in town meeting, it may seem a little daunting with all the procedures and the different types of motions. But it, it really, there, there are a lot of commonalities. You may think this is a little bizarre, but one thing that you might want to do is watch a town meeting on NCM. So, they're all on video on demand, online, so you can actually see a town meeting. And when you're doing it on demand, you can scroll ahead, and you can see how some of these things work. The main motion, that is going to be on the particular articles that are being presented. Typically, the motions, the main motions may come from the Board of Selectmen, may come from the FinCom if it's a money article, or it may come from the Planning Board if it's a zoning article. There's also such thing as citizens' petition articles. That's pretty much the, that's gonna be the main, the most common. And again, it's gonna be based on what's outlined in the warrant. There could be an amendment to the motion. So, main motion may go out there. There's a little bit of debate, and somebody may bring forth an amendment. Still has to stay on topic, but it may be a change. So, for instance, an amendment could be, wanna do something for five years. Somebody might want to amend it for 10, to make it 10 years, is a good example. But indefinite postponement is a common motion. And basically, what that means is, we're, we're not gonna take it up. So, it could be that something is on the warrant as a safety measure, might be a money article, because we think we're going to need some, the town is gonna need some money, but they found out that they don't. So, the actual motion might be for indefinite postponement. And then, my favorite motion is for someone to move to the, move to the question. And that means that all debate is halted. That is, it's non-debatable. So, that means that we stop. It basically means that we're gonna go back, we're gonna stop all debate, and we're gonna go back to the main motion. We have to vote on moving to the question. So, it takes a two-thirds majority. I'll talk about quantum of votes for a second also in a minute. And then, if it passes, we go back to the main motion. Typically, that'll happen when one of our representative town meeting members has had enough. Contrary to popular belief, I do not have a signal where I go like this, and somebody raises their hand. Normally, I'm usually surprised by whoever brings up moving to the question. The other things, and it's methods of taking votes, again, in the bylaws. The most common method is gonna be a voice vote. Most, most of our motions, our majority motions, again, one of the things, the role of the moderator is to kind of judge the room. So, I'm running the meeting. I'm making sure that the rules are abided by. But I'm also taking some judgment around when I think a voice vote, especially if it's a majority vote, is going to be easily determined. There isn't gonna be like 10 people screaming at the top of their lungs, that that would truly be a majority. When something requires a two-thirds, or in case of at least one motion, I believe it's unpaid bills, it's a nine-tenths, that may actually not be a voice vote, because we have to record the actual count. But again, if it looks like everybody is going to be in favor of it, I'm gonna go ahead with a, a voice vote, because it'll be an amendment. Every now and then, I'm on. And the thing to remember is, I've only, I've only been the moderator for a year. So, I'm not, not as, as senior as some of the moderators who came before me. David Hearn was moderator for 18 years. Mr. Plasko, how many years were you moderator for? That's, and Jack McCarthy was moderator for 14, I believe. So, any questions? All right. So, the warrant, you heard me talk about that a couple of times. On the warrant, which is going to be one of the first things that you're gonna receive, it's basically gonna state the date, time, and place for town meeting. It's gonna take, contain all the articles that we're gonna be considering. And it is mailed normally 14 days in advance of the meeting. And it also will be posted around town. The warrant is not going to have the motions in it. It's actually going to have the topic, if you will, that we're going to be discussing. And there will be a specific motion introduced at town meeting that will reflect the business of the warrant. So, you can see a great example there of different articles. Again, to see what's, some, the town of money, the sound will, will, bada, bada, bada. At the actual motion, we'll have the actual dollar amount in it. So, that's one of the big common differences. Yes, sir?
So, so that's, that's, the article is the general topic. The specifics only occur at town meeting. Why is that so? Because as a town meeting member, I'd like to understand more about the article, more about the specifics.
That's a great question. So, actually, you're gonna find out about the specifics beforehand. Because Mr. Plasko, I believe, will talk a little bit about the yellow sheets that actually come before town meetings to all town meeting members, which I would call the yellow sheets almost the commentary. The commentary is going to have the dollar amount in there. In most cases, it's pretty exact. It's going to have the commentary on why this article is coming before you, any specific background, and it does come from the Board of Selectmen. You will get that well in advance. In fact, the warrant's gonna come, and then the yellow sheets are gonna come right after that. In the case of the budget, you're gonna get a budget book. And it is, Mr. Slater probably has one right here. It's gonna give you more information than you would want. The other thing is the information sessions, which we highly recommend. But you won't be just coming into town meeting and the night of town meeting, all of a sudden being hit with a dollar amount.
Thank you.
Look, great question. All right. And then, I'm gonna wrap up with the most important part, which is how to address town meeting. Wow. We have water, guys. Thank you. It's cold. So, I did not use the Barb Simpson Town Meeting, although I really did wanna put that picture up there. But it's interesting, because I think, I think, you know, everybody who's at town meeting, hopefully, you wanna participate, and we encourage everyone to participate. This is, this is our opportunity, and your opportunity is elected representative town meeting members. So, take, take advantage of it. I, a little note, so you heard me talk about how long Mr. Plasko, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Hearn, and their predecessors were moderators. They were all men. So, last year was the first time we actually had a woman. And we had to research how you would address the moderator, because everything goes through the moderator. So, as much as I normally would not like to be called a madam, the proper way to address a woman moderator is madam moderator. So, it's not Mrs. Moderator, it's not Ms. Moderator, Ms. Moderator, it is madam moderator. And I, I gotta tell you, I absolutely love it. And my daughter actually got me AirPods that are a great madam moderator on. So, that's how much I love it. And in fact, Mr. Slater refers to me as madam moderator in our, our little life. So, the way you're recognized in town meeting is, if you haven't registered to speak, and I will talk about that in a second, you raise your hand, and you need to be recognized. I will recognize you, and at that point, depending on where you're sitting, either a runner will come over with a microphone, or you can walk up to a microphone. We have a microphones right in front that you can walk up to. When you are acknowledged to speak, you need to literally state your name and your district. And if you don't state your name and district, I will stop you and ask you to do so. And that's for a couple of different reasons. One, so everybody knows who's speaking. And two, for the record, because the Clerk's Office will keep a record of certain votes and such, and speakers. So, it's really, really important. And especially when we have citizens' petitions, they especially wanna kind of know whose points of view should they need to contact individuals after the meeting. The other thing is that if you do have a question, you ask the question through the moderator. So, even though a question that clearly is going to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to the Town Manager, to the Town Planner, you're not addressing them directly. You're asking madam moderator through you, and then your question, and then I'll field it to the appropriate party. So, again, it's a way to, to keep things somewhat orderly. Registering to speak. We're unique in the town of Norwood, and we actually have put this in our bylaw. Our practice has been to allow people to preregister to speak on a particular article. I will tell you, if you feel very passionately about a particular article, this is the best way to guarantee you will get to speak. Otherwise, once we start taking hands, I have no way of knowing if someone might move the question and then debate. So, registering to speak, per our bylaw, once the warrant is issued, from that time until the beginning of the session, where that article will be taken up, you can contact the moderator. You can do that through email. It's moderator@norwoodma.gov. Very simple. And that comes right to me. You can send me a letter, care of town hall. I would not recommend that. Or you can come up to me before the session starts, so come a little early. And you'll always see me up on the stage by the podium. I'll always have the articles ready, and if you wanna register to speak, I'm more than happy to put you on the list. And I highly recommend it. It's, it's a great feature that we have with our town meeting. And I'm really pleased that the Rules Committee recommended that we put it in the bylaw, and the body approved the bylaw to do that.
Could you give us your email address again?
I sure can. Moderator@norwoodma.gov.
Thank you.
And if I was really, really good, and I should, NCM have had you like scroll that across. Maybe in the replay, maybe in the replay, you guys will edit. That would be really good. Well, thank you. All right. So, before I turn it over to our next speaker, which is going to be Madam Clerk, Mary Wu Follin, are there any other questions? John, anything?
I know.
All right, cool. So, again, one of the, the great pleasures that I have in this role is I get to work with some, some great people. We have three women that sit up on stage, myself, Mary Wu Follin, our Town Clerk, and Meg LeMay, our Director of Finance. Mary Lou Bowden, our town clerk, and Meg Lemay, our director of finance. And with that, let me introduce the great, the one and only Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Jerry. Hi, everyone. And first of all, I wanted to congratulate all the new town meeting members that were elected and all the re-elected town meeting members that got back in again. So after the election was over, my staff last week sent out a packet. Hopefully, everybody got the new packet. It included the town charter, a copy of the town bylaws that Jerry showed you, the town meeting bylaws, the Acts of nineteen forty, not forty-seven, and a term letter stating how long you got elected for. And also, we sent an email form, oh, for everybody's email. We're trying to collect as many emails, and we're pretty close to getting almost everybody's, but the new people. And everybody's been great about bringing them in, the ones that already come in to get sworn in and stuff. And then it also explained how to commit and get sworn in. You can either get sworn in in my office, or if you can't get into the office, I will do a swearing-in session the first night of town meeting. So if you can't get in before town meeting starts, that first night, I'll be doing a swearing-in session that night. And then we also, one of the letters also explained, if you move out of town or switch, move from district to district during your term of office, it also explains what you have to do for that. You have to let me know. And if you just move within town to a different district, you'll still serve in the district that you got elected for. But then, when the next election comes up, you'll have to take out nomination papers and run in that district. And then if you move out of town, you don't have to. So that's what causes some, you know, some of the vacancies and stuff like that. Okay? So the other thing is that, so when you come to town meeting downstairs in the lobby, okay? My staff will be sitting there. There'll be three tables, or it might even be one table with three different poll pads. It doesn't matter which district you're in. You can just go to any one of my staff, and they will check you in on the poll pad, just like they did at the election. So we're using the poll pads for town meetings. That gives us the number of people that show up and stuff, and it helps with the form and stuff. You'll also be given a pink attendance card. What you have to do for that, it's dated with the town meeting date on it. What you have to do with that, sign your name on it, and then once you get the attendance card, pass it into the policeman that's going to be standing at the doorway. And he keeps track of how many people have come in so far. And that helps us to get the form as quick as we can, and we know, you know, how many people checked in on the poll pad and how many people passed in their attendance card. So it's a little pink attendance card. You have to sign in every town meeting before you do that, when you do that. You'll also be given a town meeting badge. We're switching to generic badges, just says town meeting member on it. And this is what you're going to be giving out, okay? And the boxes will be there with my staff, so they'll just give you a badge when you go in. It's important that you do take, if you're a town meeting member, wear it, because you cannot vote without having, you know, it's easier for Jerry to see everybody with the badges on. People can, anybody can speak, but people outside of town meeting cannot vote, so it's easy to have these on. So these are going to be the badges you're going to get this year. And then after the town meeting is adjourned, there'll be boxes set up. Just please return your badges, because we're trying to keep as many as we can, and then we bring them back every meeting. Okay? My office is responsible for sending out most of the documents that we have at town meeting. Somebody doesn't get something, we always have extra copies. There's always inside, once you get in to the foyer before the auditorium, there'll be handouts in there. So for some reason or other, if anybody has any new handouts, they'll all be right there. That's where we tell everybody to put all their handouts and stuff. But if someone doesn't get something ahead of time, call us, and we'll get you one ahead of time or whatever. And the budget books, the annual town meeting warrant is going to be within the budget book when they come out. And we'll be notifying everybody as soon as the budget is ready. And probably the budget books are going to go online. You can either download it online, or you can come in and actually pick up a budget book in the town hall. And we'll have extra copies the night of town meeting. Okay? What else? My job at town meeting is to sit on the stage and keep madam moderator company. And I record all the votes that are taken, as well as the speakers and, you know, different things like that. She said whoever, however they vote and whatever speakers we have. And other than that, that's all you have to do. It's pretty simple. You know, if anybody has any questions, let me know. My staff is wonderful. They know exactly what's going on. I couldn't get along without them. But other than that, I don't know. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Call us ahead of time if, you know, like I said, if you do think of anything. All right?
I think we're going to go to Mr. Plasko next with the role of the Board of Selectmen.
Again, congratulations, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. Some of what I'm going to speak about has already been covered, so it should be short. Now, the selectman's role is right at the beginning of town meeting. We call the town meetings. Everything that was said about meeting dates is decided by the selectman. Talked about some meetings in the spring and in the fall. Was it traditionally when we do have meetings? And what our goals are for having meetings, so people can kind of plan their schedules and know where we're going. But the actual decision whether or not to have that town meeting, and just what day to have that town meeting, is decided by the selectman. Also, the selectman calls town meeting, they set the date, the time, the location. Some things are also prescribed to us, like the annual town meeting that's set by our charter. The time of, or dates of which town meeting can be called is set by our bylaw. Our town meeting bylaw, Mondays or Thursdays, as was mentioned. But generally speaking, we decide which Monday, which Thursday, and so on and so forth. We set the warrants. You don't act on anything at town meeting unless we've set forth the issue to be discussed. Town meeting members or residents in general can ask for an article to be on the town meeting warrant. And the selectman can choose whether or not to put that on. If the selectman has some reason not to allow, feel that they don't want to allow that article on that town meeting, then you can basically force it on by getting a petition. If you want to put it on the annual town meeting warrant, you have to get ten signatures of ten registered voters, and it has to be certified by the town clerk's office. And if you want to do that at an upcoming special town meeting, you need to get a hundred signatures. And if the selectman refuses to call a town meeting when there appears to be a need for one, then you can petition for a justice of the peace to call for town meeting under their signature. But basically, day in and day out, we decide when there'll be a town meeting and what will be discussed. So again, when you get to town meeting, the only thing before you is what we have put on the warrant. So if we say there's an article that says to see if town will vote to put a bridge in Washington Street over Haas, uh, uh, over Washington Street over Haas Brook, you can get up and say, I want to put a wall to tower up behind the high school. It has to be germane to the calling of the article, what the issue to be discussed is about. You'll also see almost all the time, at the end of an article, it'll say, or take any other action on the matter. Even if we don't put that language, we forget to add it for some reason, you can take, make any motion that's the least bit relevant to the calling, but only if it's relevant to the calling. Again, water tanks aren't relevant to a bridge down to Washington Street. But if it was a bridge on Washington Street over Haas Brook, it might change to be a, a bridge over Haas Brook in a different location. So the courts have given wide latitude as to what can be responsive to an article that the town meeting, that the selectman has set forth. But it has to be indeed relevant. Can't be a totally different topic. The yellow sheet is nothing technical. As moderator mentioned, it's really a narrative that the selectman many, many years ago got in the habit of having prepared before town meeting. Actually, it's usually created, written up for us by the general manager's office, and we review it and go along with it, approve it, and it gets sent out to town meeting members. It's a narrative about what is expected to happen under those town meeting articles. You do not act on the articles. You act on the motion on a town meeting floor. Because the town, the motion could be slightly different than the article, as long as it's relevant and responsive to it. So we try to give information, there's a little more detail there about why something's being pushed. Isn't in an, isn't in a motion. Motion just tells you what you're going to talk, talk about, not why or what you're trying to do. So that becomes a narrative, that becomes a discussion on town meeting floor. And we try to put, as I say, a lot of that in the so-called the old sheet, and get that mailed out to town meeting members in advance, so they can have some idea of what's coming before them and why. And that might even give them some additional questions. It's, oh, you say you're going to do this, but didn't really explain why very well. I want more information. At that point, for all practical purposes, it's like what I've done with town meeting. It's in your hands. It's in the moderator's hands under certain conditions, like if there's a need to cancel meeting because of a natural disaster in climate weather or public disturbance of some kind. But otherwise, town meeting is going to be called at the time and the place that we set. That first night. If there's a reason to go a second or third night, it's your meeting, not ours. So you decide. You might decide, okay, it's going to be a Monday or Thursday, just like we were required to be Monday or Thursday. But you might say it's going to be Thursday at seven thirty, not six thirty. So, and that's our tradition. We have reasons to try to start early and get it done. But technically, it's up to you to make those decisions. It's your meeting. I can't see a town meeting without the selectman and without the general manager, because many of the articles that are on the warrants have to do with departments under our responsibility. So we're there to promote them, support them, to give you additional information, but make the motions to put before town meeting, so that you'll act on them. But on a technical basis, once we've called that warrant, once we've signed that warrant, it's out of our hands. It's your meeting. I think that's about it. What I missed. Close enough. Any questions? But thank you.
Now, we're going to go to Finance Commission Chair, Alex Slater.
Thank you, dear. Excuse me, madam moderator. The Finance Commission is always at the forefront of town meetings. And right from the town charter, and, you know, let me just read this. What are our responsibilities? Well, all activities in the warrant for the annual and special town meetings that require the appropriation of money shall be considered by the Finance Commission. And the commission shall report their own in writing to the town and said meetings with its recommendations. Now, in English, what this really means is that at a town meeting, usually the FinCom will give a presentation, you know, some kind of PowerPoint presentation, maybe ten minutes or so, we'll have some graphs, some tables, talk about, you know, where our various accounts stand, and basically, you know, where we feel, you know, as a town financially we are. Only the Finance Commission can make recommendations to town meeting members on financial articles. The selectman, you know, can make motions on certain articles. The planning board can make recommendations on zoning articles as an example. But in financial articles, it's only the Finance Commission. And the Finance Commission makes those motions. The motions are very specific, very specific to what is being funded, the amount, and the source of funding, whether it's something like free cash or borrowing, or any kind of, any kind of source, as well as any other legalese which has to go into the motion. So at a town meeting, the Finance Commission will provide you, and usually will get to you in a couple of weeks before the town meeting, a budget book. You know, two hundred pages. I'm sure all of you are looking forward to reading all of it and memorizing all the numbers. But basically, but in a nutshell, really what it includes is it's a management overview. You're going to get a letter both from the Finance Commission as well as from the town manager, talking about that fiscal year and what we expect, you know, what some of the issues, where we're dealing with and where we stand. You get the, the warrant for the annual town meeting. Then you're going to get the budget proposal, you know, which is the bulk of the book. Very detailed financial proposals for each department, which I'll show you an example of, and also supporting documents. There'll be quite a bit of information available to people, you know, explaining terms, explaining, you know, differences in the budget from, from this year to the previous year, as well as just information on structure of our town government. So this is a typical budget. I picked the airport. The only reason I picked the airport is as everything I want to show people on one, you know, on one page. So... So what will you be voting on? So I'll be making a motion in town meeting, and I will identify the funding source. And what I'll say is, you know, make the motion that, you know, from taxation, let's say, we're going to fund the airport for a total of, see if this works.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It does. It probably doesn't show, but whatever. You know, the, the total for the airport is three hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars. So I'll make a motion to that effect. So what are you voting on? You're voting really on a couple of things. You're voting on that total amount, but you're also voting on the subcategories, like your salary for two hundred six thousand dollars. Here is operating expenses, one hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Capital expenses, six thousand dollars. All of this adds up to three hundred fifty-one eight hundred thirty-seven dollars. And just so you see some of these numbers as an example, operating expenses, what this tells you is you can spend one hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars on operating expenses. You can mix and match between these various categories. You know, like maintenance of grounds is forty-three thousand, snow and ice is forty-seven thousand three hundred. You can spend forty-seven thousand three hundred eighty dollars on maintenance of grounds and forty-three thousand dollars on snow and ice expenses, as long as the bottom line for all of these, these categories of operating expenses does not exceed one hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Education budget is a little bit different than some of the other budgets we have in town. It's the largest budget we have in town, well over fifty million dollars. Most detailed budget, plus or minus forty-five pages. You're going to see pages talking about personnel at all the different schools, some of the expenses at all the different schools, transportation, special education, et cetera. The big difference here is through state law. I believe it's the Educational Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three. Town meeting only votes on the total budget amount. Let's say that's fifty-five million dollars. So they can spend that fifty-five million dollars any way they want, you know, to, to provide the services that they feel is necessary. They're not limited by, you can only spend so much money in the Callahan, and so much money in the Ballage, so much money in the high school, so much money for transportation. They're given the authority to spend that amount of money, which we vote in the overall budget, any way that they see fit to provide the educational services to the children of, of Norwood. Again, very, very different. At a special town meeting, you certainly don't get a budget book that's two hundred pages. But you get what's referred to as the pink sheet. And what we will do is, Tom, the Finance Commission will take votes on the financial articles for the special town meeting. And we will summarize those recommendations to town meeting members with a funding source. And if you look at the next slide, which is an example of a pink sheet, and you're going to see for articles one through eight, the FinCom took no position, because those are not funding articles. Using article number nine as an example, that's for capital projects. There are, you know, a whole list of capital projects, and we'll note in the comments section of this an attached list of those specific capital projects. And what we'll do is, you know, we'll also indicate, you know, where and what trench of money we're funding those specific capital articles, whether it's free cash, whether it's borrowing, whether it's rates, or any other, you know, any other, you know, a specific or one-time source. So that's basically what we do. And, you know, if people don't understand the budget, please ask questions. Either we will answer it, or town manager will answer it, and go from there. So with that, are there any questions?
So we have town meeting in May.
Yes.
For the articles that we're voting on, what, what's the time period that these financial articles include? I mean, is it from July, July first to June thirty first?
Okay, okay. For the annual town meeting, it's the annual budget. So that'll be the, like, in, in May, you will be voting the fiscal FY twenty-four budget.
What's the fiscal?
So that'll be, the fiscal year is July one to June thirtieth. And on a special town meeting, the financial articles, uh, may be usually very specific to a particular project or a particular issue, uh, that you have, and they're not necessarily related to the fiscal year per se. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Just, did you want to discuss CPA? Another funding?
I wasn't planning to.
Well, I guess I can jump in here. Probably more slides out, but that's okay. Uh, Community Preservation Act is a surcharge on property taxes. Everyone pays a one percent surcharge on their property tax bill, and the funding has to be in one of four specific areas, open space, housing, uh, it was historic preservation, and, uh, outdoor recreation. The articles appear on the annual town meeting warrant. The Community Preservation Committee is its own separate committee. They take requests and recommendations from the community, from town departments. They vet the projects, they decide what to put forward for community preservation projects, and then the town's apt to, uh, vote on them. Uh, money not spent in CPA stays with the CPA. So if for some reason we said, gee, we don't want to spend a thousand dollars on this historic renovation project, and, um, I wish we could find the historic renovation project for a thousand dollars, but if we didn't want to spend two hundred thousand dollars on it, that money stays with CPC, or C, we use the terms interchangeably. They are a lot of the nicer projects you'll see in town, and that was the goal behind the state's Community Preservation Act law, is to fund things that sometimes it's hard in the budget when you're trying to balance it, and you're trying to decide, gee, we don't want the classroom size to go up at the old time, we really need that teacher, but we got to replace the carillon bells, or we really want to improve a park. So we've got a couple of exciting CPA projects on, uh, the warrant this year, mostly along lines of historic space, uh, historic preservation, some open space work, some work on the old parish cemetery, and a couple of housing projects.
Yeah, that's, that's neat.
Yeah, okay. Was worried I got to pitch it for the whole thing out, but...
Yeah, all right. Thank you. What I want to talk about is basics of municipal finance, which really isn't as daunting as, as it sounds. So... And, you know, in a budget book, you're going to see many of these definitions, maybe not in this detail, but at least we'll give you some handle. So what's a budget? It's a statement of priority for the community, showing how we want to spend the money. And what you're going to see in our budget book is, you know, how much money we spend on, you know, education, or fire, or police, or facilities, uh, how much money we spend on debt service, you know, for, for different projects. It includes the operating budgets of the various departments, as well as shared expenses. And shared expenses is, um, you know, it takes up a large part of the budget, and shared expenses are things like, uh, health insurance, debt service, retirement, things like that. And these are really accounting documents, and this is snapshot in time. It's the best estimate you have at the time to where we think we're going to be spending the money that we're, we're given. And then sample budget, you know, uh, similar to what I showed you earlier, this is Mary Lou's budget. And I think, you know, what, what we try to show you is a, a period of years, how that budget varies. And for something like, like Mary Lou's budget, uh, it's generally not a lot of variation in a given year. Uh, it's mostly, uh, your cost of living increases, uh, maybe, you know, a few changes here and there on operating expenses, but it's basically, you know, pretty stable in a, on a, on a given year. Hey, stabilization funds. And we have several stabilization funds, uh, in Norwood. Uh, it's really more like a rainy day fund, sort of like, uh, uh, savings account that you have. We try to keep it for instances, well, a couple of reasons. One is for instances where you may have an emergency and you need money right away. Like twenty years ago, I believe, there was, like, an oil spill. Yeah, we had, we had, uh, we had to spend a certain amount of money to, to clean that up, you know, and, uh, using stabilization, and, uh, I think was the way we did that. We used some stabilization money a few years ago to pay for a portion of the new DPW building, which, uh, allowed us to take a nice piece of change off the top, which, which reduced the amount of money we'd have to pay over, over time for debt service. And we try to have, uh, ten percent, uh, of a general fund, uh, for stabilization funds. I believe the number we have is a little bit higher than five percent, so we're doing well. And this is also a number that the rating agencies, uh, will look at when they, uh, give us a rating of where our debt stands. I mean, the better you are, the more stabilization you have, the less free cash you use in your operating budget, uh, how do you stand with some of your, uh, other shared expenses, you know, like retirement, et cetera, et cetera, goes into, uh, uh, the, um... Uh, as my mind goes blind, goes into the, uh, goes, goes, goes into the rating agencies. So... Free cash. Free cash is really surplus revenue, it's revenue which isn't spent. Um, it's money which is returned, uh, in a given year, and I'll, I'll show you a couple of examples in a, in a subsequent slide. Um, Commonwealth recertifies this usually in the fall, around October, uh, and November. We can't spend it, any of it, until, uh, until it's certified, uh, by, uh, by the Department of Revenue. Uh, we've always been fortunate that we've had that certification prior to, uh, the special town meeting that we'll have in the fall. If we don't have that certification, then free cash is off the table, we can't spend it, but we've been lucky that we've had, had it. At the end of a fiscal year, on June thirtieth, uh, the money doesn't go away, but anything that's remaining after June thirtieth in free cash can't be used, you know, in that next fiscal year until it gets recertified in the fall by the, uh, by the Commonwealth. And it's a one-time revenue source. Okay, so this is just some of the, uh, examples of how we calculate free cash, revenue collections in excess of, uh, the estimates. You know, we may be collecting more for ambulance receipts, or building permits as an example. We were very good in building permits this year because some of the large projects we've had, such as Moderna and the hospital. So we're getting more, more of those, uh, funds this year than we would in a typical year. Budget turnbacks, uh, we, we give a certain amount of money to the various departments every year, they may not spend all of it. And then the prior year's free cash. And a little bit with, a little bit of outstanding property taxes from prior year, but that's really very, very minimal amount. So what are the threats to free cash? Free cash, usually it's overbooking revenues. You know, we, we assume, um, we're having a great year for, uh, um, building permits as an example. Well, this is, that's really a one-time thing. You're not going to get, you know, two hundred million dollar projects for Moderna or the hospital, I mean, in, every year, so you don't, don't assume that's part of your budget for, for, for the next fiscal year. If you do, then you're going to be short because, you know, and that, that, you have to, you have to be really careful in how you, uh, and how you, uh, allocate money and, you know, what some of your assumptions are, given, you know, given when you do your budget. Couple of examples of free cash. Employee makes a thousand dollars a week, that's fifty-two, uh, grand a year. You have an opening, because somebody, uh, resigns for five weeks, you don't spend that money for five weeks, that's five thousand dollars. That goes into free cash. The other example we have, and this goes to the example I had with building permits, is that you budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for building permits, but you only had ninety-five thousand, so that brings your free cash down by five thousand dollars. Different revenue sources that we have to make up, uh, the budget. The major one is the tax levy. That's our property taxes, subject to proposition two and a half. So, uh, the amount of tax revenue we collect in FY twenty-four is the amount you collected in FY twenty-three times two and a half percent, plus any new growth, uh, that we have, new industry, new businesses that move into town, as well as any, um, you know, debt exclusions we have from various projects, like the high school, uh, and, uh, the new middle school project. Local receipts, you know, which includes your building permits, your ambulance permits, your ex, your auto excise tax, meals and room taxes, uh, pilot is, uh, payment in lieu of taxes. You know, we took a big hit on some of these, uh, in the COVID years, such as meals and room tax. We're starting to get back to, uh, where we were before, but it was a struggle, and we had to be very particular in how we budgeted those. As I said, we didn't assume, you know, it was, everything was wonderful and it's the way it was three, four years ago, which we, we tried to use, uh, closer to actual numbers. State aid, which we're up significantly in this year, which is great, primarily in the education department, and other sources, uh, uh, fund we created, uh, to help us ride through the override, uh, called the override stabilization fund. We had to use that this year to help us balance the budget. And, uh, free cash, which typically we don't use to balance the budget. We may have, we're going to use a little bit this year to fund some one-time items, but generally, free cash is not part of the operating budget. Uh, the reserve fund is, uh, under the control of the Finance Commission. I believe it's a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that the FinCom is allocating. There may be instances during the year where a department needs money for some reason. Uh, you, you can't depend on town meeting, because town meeting won't be for months. So the FinCom has the ability to allocate sums of money to the different, to, to a department for a particular reason, and it's not to be used just because, well, you know, we, we'd like it. There has to be a particular unexpected reason that you need that amount of money. And whatever we have remaining at the end of the year, uh, ends in free cash. And typically, you know, we have a, it's available, uh, we haven't really used it that often, but it is available in cases needed. Question?
Yeah.
Sure.
So what would be the difference between unforeseen expense and supplemental appropriations?
Unforeseen expenses would be during the year. The easiest example is if something breaks. So you take Mary Lou's office, her office budget is only a couple thousand dollars. If a voting machine breaks during the year, the budget can't accommodate a twenty-six hundred dollar, um, repair, you would take that with the reserve fund. Larger departments would have a larger, um, item. We had an issue with the fuel system earlier this year that was around a maybe twenty thousand dollar repair. Most of the budgets aren't designed to absorb.
And so what would a supplemental appropriation?
At town meeting, if we recently know we need money for something, you would add money at town meeting. That's usually the first article of the special town meeting every year, is usually what we need to, to get through the end of the year. And you only need a town side of the budget, because again, the school budget, um, the school committee has authority to move any money among their fifty-two million dollars. We can't, if Mary Lou's operating budget is, you know, five thousand dollars, we have five thousand dollars. If it's not there, it's got to be the reserve fund or town meeting. I can't say, oh, hey, the DPW's got, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars over here, and police has it over here, we have to go to town meeting for that.
Okay. Uh, revolving funds, uh, you know, different departments have revolving funds, you know, the senior center has, uh, revolving funds, the recreation department, school department. Uh, this is where, you know, the department collects a fee at the beginning, whether it can be at the beginning of the year or on a, on a regular basis, and then that, on a particular service, and then that money is spent to provide that service. And at the end of the year, most of those revolving funds, not all of them, but most of the revolving funds will revert back to the general fund. And you start fresh the next year. Debt service, uh, this is what we always refer to when the FinCom as our credit card. This is money used to, uh, pay for different projects. It could be small items, uh, it could be equipment, or it could be a major project, uh, such as, uh, the new middle school, which we just appropriated a hundred fifty million dollars for. So, yeah, we say it's a loan, it's really no different than your home mortgage. We have to pay interest on that. Uh, that's based on the credit rating that the town gets. The town has an excellent credit rating, double A+, that's the second highest you can get from standard and poor. Uh, that equates to a very high credit quality, very low credit risk. That means that we, uh, will get a much lower interest rate, uh, for those bonds as we would, for, as opposed to a community that is a poor credit risk. And that equates to, to a project like the, uh, middle school, that's going to equate to millions of dollars over the, uh, uh, period of the, uh, payback of that loan. Very important also is that municipalities, you know, we borrow money for projects, capital projects. You can't borrow money to balance the budget, that is just not allowed, that is totally forbidden. Now, different types of debt service. The first is within the basic tax levy, within proposition two and a half. And we have, you know, a number of projects, most of the capital projects we have are under, uh, you know, the proposition, uh, two and a half limit. When you get to really big projects, you know, such as the high school, such as the middle school, you have to go outside the tax levy. Uh, and there has to be borrowing, which is voted not only by town meeting, but also by the voters in a, in a special election. And that's known as a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion is not permanent, is only for the, uh, length of, uh, paying off the bond for that project, whereas, you know, the middle school is twenty-five years, so that's a pretty long time. But, uh, that eventually will go away. There is also debt paid by utilities. You're going to see, uh, money which we're going to be, which is asked for, for the various utilities, such as water and sewer as an example. You know, we, we have, you know, we have, uh, motions, uh, uh, for projects to make improvements to the sewer system, to line the water lines, to make improvements, to broadband as an example. Those are paid out of utility, they're not paid out of taxes, those are paid out of rates. This is an example of debt service. First line, a hundred six million, I think that's the money inside the levy. Uh, what that equates to, uh, is that in FY twenty-four, we're going to be paying a little bit more than four point six million, uh, for, for debt service, for those basic projects. Where the projects outside the levy, it's actually eight million dollars. Um, and that's for the high school project, which will be paid off in twenty thirty-five, and the middle school project, which will be paid off in twenty forty-eight.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
The money for the middle school, have, have we borrowed all of that, or are we borrowing that in as it's needed?
What we did was this, it's a hundred fifty million dollar project. We received forty-some odd million dollars from the state.
Did they give it to us already?
Uh, we, they, it's been promised to us, you know, we have contracts that guarantee that they will give it to us. Uh, we recently, we went out, uh, probably about a year ago, and we borrowed a hundred million dollars. And the reason we did, we borrowed all of it then, is because, you know, you get the indication, rates are going up. So we borrowed it all, and we borrowed a hundred million, uh, at a, at an excellent, uh, interest rate, in less than four percent, which saved us considerable amount of money. If we did it in different stages, uh, you know, it probably would be five, six percent now, you know, which again, equates to millions of dollars and, you know, a lot of money, a lot of, lot of an increase on, uh, on your tax bill. Uh, you know, there may have to be, you know, maybe a small supplemental, uh, borrowing, you know, just when you have the fin, the final cost in a couple of years, but bottom line is most of the money for the, uh, uh, middle school is already been borrowed at, at very good rates.
Sorry, there'd be, is it now like in a, in a, in a savings account, where it was making interest, making money, or, I don't know?
I don't think...
I don't know how all this stuff works.
Yeah, I don't think you can make money, that's sort of called arbitrage. You know, you can't borrow and then make money on top of that, the federal government doesn't like that. So again, proposition two and a half overrides, uh, that's, that's a little different than the debt exclusion. Proposition two and a half override is permanent. If you recall, we had one about four years ago. Uh, it was, what, about seven million dollars, plus or minus? And that was for, primarily for the schools, and also a little bit for general government. We don't like to do proposition two and F overrides. FinCom, you know, is a rule, doesn't like them. You know, there may be instances where they're required, uh, but we, if, we'll do everything we can to avoid a permanent increase in taxes. Yeah, a lot of times people talk about the tax rate, you know, like Town X, the tax rate is so many dollars... Yeah, a lot of times people talk about the tax rate, you know, like town X, the tax rate is so many dollars per thousand. Well, those numbers really mean nothing. Uh, what really is important is what your average tax bill is. And Norwood is very fortunate that we have a very large commercial industrial component to our tax base. And we also charge the industrial, uh, commercial component a slightly different tax rate. Than we do the residences, uh. And so I think it's called a shift. We put a little bit more of the burden on them than we do on the residents. So if you go to the next slide. Just some of the communities, uh, in the area. Norwood's annual taxes, uh, a little more than six thousand dollars. Right across the board, and Westwood, it's thirteen thousand. Dedham, it's eighty-five hundred. You know, Sharon, it's, it's twice as much. Kent, it's a little bit probably about twenty percent higher. So we've always worked to try to keep the tax bills as low as we can. The reason for that primarily is the amount of commercial, uh. Uh, establishments which we have in Norwood, which allows us to spread it out that way. And utility funds. Uh, there are four of those, electric. Broadband, water and sewer. You know, that's, that's paid for by your rates. You can only spend that on utility rated items. You can't go to the electric light company and say, yeah, hey, give us some, give us a, you know, a couple of million we need it. Can't do that. What we will do is because, you know, the utilities, you know, the things like billing. And some of the, uh, expenses, you know, like salary and, uh, whatever. That there will be some chargebacks, uh, to general government from those utilities to pay for those, uh, particular services. So. That said, questions?
Oh, five, six slides back, uh, tax levy.
Yeah.
You talked about the two and a half percent?
Tax levy is two and a half percent of the previous year plus any new growth.
Okay, so two and a half percent of the previous year.
Yeah.
So you can go two and a half percent above that, right?
Yes.
Now, the following tax year, is that a new base or you include the two and a half percent of the prior year?
It's a new base, yeah.
So then you're two and a half percent again on that.
Correct, yes.
Two and a half percent compounding then.
Correct, yeah.
Wow.
That's the way it's been since. I believe what, forty years?
Early eighties.
Yeah.
Wow. Ten years is twenty-five percent.
I mean, I know what I. I mean, I know what I paid when I first came to Norwood and I paid more in a quarter than I did the whole year when I first came. I mean, it's just the way it goes. Question.
So is the town bound by law to balance the budget?
Yes.
What law? Is it state, federal?
State. I, I, I can't give you the quote, chapter and verse, but we're required, we're required to present, to present a balanced budget.
Our budget is an appropriate, sorry, it's an appropriation law, so we cannot spend more than town meeting has authorized us to spend. So town meeting says, says you have a million dollars. Legally, we have to stop spending when we hit that million dollar limit.
So the budget is a dynamic thing, it's not static.
Yeah.
Town meeting, it's changing throughout the year.
Yeah.
So, uh. What is the evidence that we've balanced the budget? Is it a report to the state?
Sure, so we're required to submit in October, um, our tax recapitulation sheet. Where that's when we actually prove to the state that here's our projected revenues and they will audit that. You know, I can't say, well, we're going to get two hundred million dollars in tax revenue this year. They're going to say, no, no, you've taken an eighty-six million dollars each year. You're going to get this, they verify that and then they verify our expenditure budget. We have the same accounting controls that most organizations, um, have that you're not allowed to overspend. Um, where you are, if you did, if it happened to happen, sometimes you have a mistake. Um, the town relies on its fund balance, but we're ultimately a political subdivision of the state, all three hundred fifty-one cities and towns are. So in theory, if we ran out of money, the state is responsible for what happens in Norwood. They don't let that happen, they would step in long before, um, that happens.
But you also have that. You get the name of the fund.
Override stabilization.
The stabilization, but we can't have, we can only draw down on that if town meeting authorizes that. So in the middle of the year, if we all of a sudden have to come up with money for something that's not in the budget, it has to go to town meeting or through some other mechanism. Yeah.
Yes.
Correct. And we're audited just like most other agencies, so we have to pass an annual audit. We get our credit, um, is rated just like any other agency.
Norwood D R R does also is they look at what we've had in past years. Like, again, you know, you can't say that, uh, uh, let's say ambulance receipts are two million dollars last year. I can't say in FY twenty-four, oh, they're going to be five million dollars.
Yeah, they make you prove it and they're pretty strict about proving it. If for some reason we thought we were going to double ambulance revenues, they would want to show what that evidence is. Sometimes you can say, look, we raised rates ten percent, so we think we're going to collect ten percent more. They might let you get by with that.
Now, is it the responsibility of the, the finance commission to, uh, submit for federal and state grants?
Finance commission, uh, doesn't, we're, we're advisory only. You know, it's the various department, whether it's the school department or the airport or the DPW, you know, as an example, the water. You know, the water and sewer, uh, responsibilities, you know, they're the ones who will be filing for the actual grants.
Distributed throughout the departments.
Yep, yep.
The responsibility.
Yep.
Thank you. So what's precluding the town from having a triple A rating for Mississippi?
Well.
Fun balance really is what it is.
It's, it's complicated, um. And the question is. When interest rates were low, was it? Was it really worth going through the effort to get a triple A? You always like to have a triple A. But when the interest rates like a couple of years ago are really low, the difference between a triple, triple A and a double A plus. Was only twenty-five basis points, you know, a quarter of a percent. As interest rates go higher, then that gap, uh, gets a little bit larger. I think it refers to things like fund balances. You know, how much you have in stabilization. Where do you stand with your, uh, uh, retirement? Um, our retirement, uh, is about. Plus or minus, it's about eighty percent funded.
Retirement, you, you, town or Norwood's contribution?
Right.
What is that, twenty percent?
Uh, no, so what Alan's referring to is our pension liability. We're at about eighty percent fully funded for our pension liability. The way the pension system works in Massachusetts, it's the same system for every city and town in the Commonwealth. It's a mandatory contribution for municipal employees. Employees contribute about eleven percent of their salary. The town contributes an actuarial amount determined by PERIC, which is the state's retirement authority, to get us to fully funded by twenty thirty. We're at, as Alan said, about eighty percent. School teachers contribute the same amount for their pension, but the state actually pays the school contribution for teachers' pension systems. For teachers' pensions, it's a separate system. So our all-in pension fund is, we probably contribute annually, call it five point seven million a year. And again, that's based on an actuarial evaluation to get us fully funded by twenty thirty. Uh, the problem being systems sometimes hit fully funded and the market changes and all of a sudden you're not fully funded, so.
We're.
The goalpost will continue.
We're actually fully funded, you know, before they had the, uh, the financial crisis around two thousand eight. Uh, what you really want to do is get a little bit over one hundred percent, so you have that flexibility in case there is a market.
I got it explained, please.
Yeah.
Because it's a blank that I didn't understand and didn't know how to research.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, there's a few other funds, you know, like, uh, uh, OPEV fund, um, you know, which. Most communities are just starting to fund, that the fund, um. You know.
I'm sorry, what was that?
OPEV, uh, other, other post-employment benefits.
Yeah, the town, like, uh, every town in Massachusetts, actually, there's about six of them that don't in the Commonwealth. We provide retiring healthcare once somebody's, uh, retired and it's actually state law that we have to do so. Um, there's a liability on the books for that, our post-employment benefits liability. Most towns are nowhere nearly funded for it, there's two or three very wealthy towns that have it.
We're a long way away from that, but those are, but those are the types of things that the rating agency will look at. You know, like how much free cash we use, it's, those types of things, uh, on an, on an annual basis, uh. You know, we're trying to get there, we're not there yet. But fortunately, when we had to finance the large, uh, middle school project. Rates were still low, so there really wasn't much of a variance between triple A and double A.
The rating agencies have also started to look more into the relative wealth level of the community. It used to be you could just get away with fund balance and say, hey, it doesn't matter if we're a poor town, we've got twelve million dollars in the bank and that's twice what anyone our size has. And they'd say, great, but they do look at the actual income level in your town. We have five nursing homes in Norwood, anyone permanently residing at those nursing homes, generally they're on. Um, if their income is lower, that gets factored into the community's overall income level. It's a little bit more complicated in Norwood, but there are some towns that are per capita much wealthier than us. But have large nursing homes and can't reach that triple A rating because the residents are considered permanent and it's factored into what their overall community income is. Through ten more million dollars in the bank and they, rating agencies might say, uh, go for it, but. We talk to them every year when we borrow and we always try to make the pitch that we should be triple A and. Our, our S and P guy lives in Canton, which is triple A rated, so I always feel like that, uh. It's factors against us, but, you know, not going to make the complaint.
And further questions?
Hey, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alan, great job.
Thank you. The only thing more exciting than municipal finance is municipal land use. Um, this is a new section, it'll be short, we only got about ten slides. Uh, this is, by the way, Sarah Bouchard, our town planner. We are, uh, debuting this first this year, we appreciate feedback when we're done about what you want to know. Land use and zoning is the most important thing town meeting does. I know we talked about the finances being the most important, but I really think it's land use. It's one of the most important authorities that town meeting has to decide how land is being used. And if you think about it, when you're doing the budget, town meeting is collectively saying, well, we're going to decide how to spend our money. But with land use regulation, what town meeting is telling everyone else how to use their property. And it, it's a, it's a bigger expansion of sort of communal rights than you've seen in a lot of other parts in the country. And zoning, of course, there's a lot of history and it dates back, but you as residents are allowed to tell a company like Moderna. How they're going to use their land, so you can also tell your neighbors how they're going to use your land and your neighbors can tell you how to use your land. So I always consider it to be the most important thing that town meeting, uh, actually will vote on in a given year. Land use petitions come to town meeting, sometimes from citizens, sometimes through the planning board and town staff, uh, as well. Uh, John, go to the first slide. So before we talk about land use, let's talk about buildings, because what goes on land generally, it's buildings. The building inspector is a statutory position in Massachusetts, appointed by the town manager. He or she is responsible for inspecting buildings according to the state building code. We also have a plumbing and electrical inspector who are required to inspect buildings, again, according to a state code. We don't have too much latitude in building inspections. Every inspector has a certain degree of discretion, but if the code says, you know, the steps need to be six inches apart, they really need to be six inches apart. There's some variance processes you can go through, but if you're building a single-family home and the stairs are supposed to be six inches. The board of building regulators in the state, who you would appeal the building inspector's decision to, is not going to say, no, just because you want to go to four inches, we're going to let you go to four inches. It's usually if there's a historic or specific structure. Building inspector also enforces zoning. Our zoning bylaws are, are regulation of structures and uses on property, include the use of land, the types of permitted uses. The structural dimensions, we are actually able to tell somebody how tall your building can be, how far it can be set back from the road, how far it needs to be set back in your backyard. And in your side yard, if you have a, have to have a step back, which is if your building is allowed to go to a certain height and then beyond a certain height, you want to go back. That's actually something that zoning can and does regulate. It all comes from the state zoning act, we are required to regulate zoning in Massachusetts. We have to meet the state's minimum, we can go beyond that for certain zoning, uh, areas, but we have to at least meet the minimum. The example we use here is if the state requires ten percent of housing stock to be dedicated to affordable housing, we could acquire fifteen, but we can't go down to five. Now, uh, we'll go to the next slide. Before we get into the zoning map. Let's talk a little bit about what what zoning does, it's really an ideal. So we'll, you look at a piece of town, you say, this is what the community wants in this area and this is how we think it should look. Well, the problem is especially in town like Norwood, we're fully built out. So we can look at all the houses in a neighborhood and say, you know what, I think they should all be three stories and they should all have. Uh, be twenty feet back from the lot, uh, from the lot and they should all be half acre lots. But all of a sudden, nobody's going in and buying forty houses and tearing them down and rebuilding them with different lots. So you pass zoning to be somewhat aspirational of what you want it to look like. Acknowledging that most of what's there is going to be there for a long time and over time it will come into compliance. But sometimes it can take a generation or more. Zoning is much more complicated in a dense, fully built-out community like Norwood. I used to work for a small rural city in northern Maine, Caribou. Eighty square miles, seven thousand people, zoning is very easy in Caribou. Huge, huge swaths of the map are empty. You never needed to go to the zoning board of appeals, which we'll talk about, when you own forty acres, it's not hard to stay five feet from your property line. In Norwood, as you know, we have smaller houses on smaller lots, we're fairly on top of each other, we're not as bad as a. Like maybe a Newton or Cambridge or something like that, but we're also not, can't near Dedham, we're, we're, we live pretty close to each other. One of the ways zoning regulates things is by setting up zones and we often refer to it as a zoning map. And you have here our actual color-coded map. And we have, um, close to a dozen districts and each district will regulate out what you can actually do in that particular area. Now, zoning is also supposed to be tied to a master or a comprehensive plan, which we're working on an update over the next couple of years. Sometimes they become out of updates, but again, two hundred years ago, mills started getting placed in certain areas. Over time, that sort of became your commercial area. Zoning is supposed to regulate like uses and make sure that residential areas somewhat stay residential and commercial somewhat stay commercial. Um, if anyone lives on like Admiral Mall Road, that's zoned residential, nobody's going to buy two houses there and put McDonald's in there. Um, nor would somebody likely buy, uh, one of the auto dealerships and put in just a small, single-family home there. Not only does the zoning not allow it, but that's what you're trying to avoid. Where it gets complicated is you live next to, that was built in eighteen ninety and somebody's operated an auto shop out of there for seventy years. And you build a home next door and you don't want the auto shop next to you, but they've been there for seventy years, so zoning gets much more complicated. As I said, this is our actual map, central business, we have, um, general business, Boston Providence Highway, which is mostly the blue there, that's route one. We have limited business, limited manufacturing. We have a couple of zones like this, this one that's kind of life science development district. That's the, um, it's an overlay district, it's the, actually, I think we changed the map to make it its own district. That's where Forbes Hill is, where Moderna is expanding. Sometimes you want to zone an entire area to achieve a certain goal or a certain, uh, growth prospect. Go right ahead.
Um, I like to think about zoning as being a way of protecting property rights. Um, the last slide, uh, describes zoning as separating incompatible uses and I think McDonald's on Admiral Mall is a great example. Um, sometimes it's very straightforward, um, but at the end of the day, what it looks like very often is protecting the rise of a certain property owner. In context of the greater good to the community. So if you have a residential and a commercial neighbor next to each other, right, the auto shop and the family living in a single-family residence. Those two uses might be a little incompatible and they might conflict in some ways. Um, your zoning is a way of being able to try to find. And encourage development that doesn't conflict, but also provide some provisions for when those uses already exist. Um, by mitigating those circumstances or offering a way for those rights to be protected in purple. Um, in a way that recognizes the value of both. Alan talked about a residential tax rate and how we enjoy a residential tax rate. That's lower in Norwood because we have such a commercial base. So it would be very easy to say, no auto shops, they're so loud, they're so noisy, they're so stinky. But at the same time, commercial operation in our town benefits everyone. So we have to find the right places to be able to put those uses and find ways to control those uses. Through how far apart we build our structures and, you know, we have environmental regulations for lighting and, uh, how bright things can be. Uh, so a lot of our zoning really is about protecting those rights and trying to find compatible way for everything to exist because of all places in the world in our town.
So, uh, I'm excited. So this is our use chart. And sometimes, and this is actually just a portion of the overall use chart. Looks a little complicated, like a zoning, uh, like a zoning, it is zoning, like an algebra problem, but you'll notice all of our different districts along here. There's a whole list of uses, whether you could do it, whether you cannot do it, whether the planning board has to approve it. Um, or whether there's other conditions. Sarah, is note eleven your favorite? I don't think it's the eleven on here.
Which one?
Uh, no, fifteen maybe. So each of these numbers would correspond to, the planning board can maybe issue a special permit with certain guidelines. So usually people ask us, what's that?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yes, twelve, let me get it again.
Um, people like to ask us, can I do this on my property? And sometimes it's simple and the building commission makes that determination, hey, I want to build a shed or I want to build a deck if it's X size, it's fairly easy and residential. Commercial can get a little bit more complicated and then sometimes if it's not clearly on the chart, that can become a little bit complicated as well. But all of this, as Sarah said, is intended to try to contain like uses, to try to make sure the restaurants go where the restaurants go and the homes go where the homes go. Next slide. Here's an example of our dimension and setbacks. So again, we can actually regulate, when we say we, with me town meeting, how much of your lot you can take up. How far you need to be back from each side. Um, so you'll see in the S two, minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. So when you think about that for a minute, you're telling somebody you can't build on a lot smaller than this and that prevents, you know. I don't want to say it prevents, uh, certain types of housing, but it can prevent certain types of housing and development. All the way up to in the light manufacturing, the minimum lot area is three acres. The idea behind that being if you're actually doing something that's light manufacturing, you really shouldn't be doing it on a very small lot, you should have significant amount of space. The rear setbacks, the side setbacks, how high a building, uh, is allowed to be. Um, in the, uh, life sciences district, we allow under certain conditions up to eighty feet, that's really for a specific project. We do have to avoid what's known as spot zoning, where you're really zoning specifically one particular parcel for one particular property use. The actual definition of spot zoning doesn't really exist in the world, it's sort of what town meeting thinks it is, what town council thinks it is, and ultimately what the attorney general thinks it would be. Um, clearly, one lot on Admiral Mall Road, rezoning that to allow a McDonald's would absolutely be spot zoning. Um, clearly one lot on Avril Mall Road rezoning that to allow McDonald's would absolutely be spot zoning. Uh, a tank or parcel, hmm, it depends. So how does zoning actually get exacted, enacted? How do we decide how far your house has to be back from the road? And zoning is also, as I said, um, it's always going forward. So if your house is 10 feet back from the road, we change something saying it has to be 20 feet back from the road. You don't have to tear your house down and move your front porch.
Many of your homes in Norwood are on non-conforming lots and they're non-conforming structures. And it's not because you've done anything wrong. That's not like a condemnation. It's just the reality that zoning is a living document and it has changed so many times since all of our structures, not all, but many of them are built in the early 1900s, the 1800s. You know, our zoning bylaw maybe didn't even exist. And then once it did, we've changed it to evolve and grow over time to reflect the world we live in and what our needs are. So, um, I sometimes get calls from folks who get a little sniffly and say, I'm non-conforming. It's okay. We're all non-conforming.
Yeah. So the planning board is the body that's supposed to steward zoning for the community. It's not to say that no other town board or body or members might want to do something, but that's really the role of the planning board. They formulate changes, they develop the policies, they hold the public hearings and they make the recommendation to town meeting. So just as the finance commission makes a recommendation to town meeting on how we should expend money each year or each town meeting, the planning board is sort of the, your elected representative's official determination of how we think we should do it. It is still up to town meeting to decide what to do, but that's what their role is. Town meeting votes and then as I said, the attorney general has to review and approve all zoning bylaws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now that's not really decisional on that point. They're not sitting there saying, well, I like this or I don't like it. It's to ensure conformity with the law, to ensure it's not discriminatory. You'd be surprised, but a lot of people try to do very discriminatory things with zoning and they have over the years. What's that? Yep. And then they have, and sometimes it's not as much discriminatory as a town won't want something, but legally you can't say no to it. Um, adult entertainment areas are an example of something that towns often want to regulate out. And the law has said, you really, at the local level, don't have the ability to tell them no, but you can zone for it somewhere, but it has to be reasonable because what would towns do? And this goes back 50 or 60 years ago. They have a town forest and they take a half an acre right in the middle of the town forest and say, well, this is zoned for, uh, you know, adult bookstores or whatever. Therefore you're never going to be able to build it. And at some point the attorney general said, no, you really can't do that. Now you could take an existing industrial park and say that something like that is zoned for it there. And it doesn't mean that somebody's going to be able to do it because they're not going to go in and buy a factory, but that will be something that the AG would much more likely, regulate because the type of use sometimes gets into a first amendment issue. If it's really retail, retail is retail. The state made some changes with marijuana zoning, um, when that became legal, but that's a whole, um, sort of separate statutory framework. So who enforces zoning? We talked about this earlier. It's the building inspector. So a lot of the zoning complaints we might get is, hey, my neighbor is running a business out of their house. Probably one of the hardest zoning enforcement for us to actually deal with because we have to prove that somebody's running a business out of their house. And you're allowed to work from home. But let's say you run a, an auto repair shop out of your home. Well, we have to go there. The building inspector has to cite you. He has to be able to prove it. If you happen to have two cars in your garage, to what extent are we going to send the building inspector on a witch hunt to try to find that he saw you advertising online? And we reasonably think we can do it. And then all he can do is issue either a fine or a cease and desist. Ultimately, to enforce that, we have to go to court. Anyone who's familiar with the courts in Massachusetts, they don't really like to do very much about a lot of things. Um, so relatively minor zoning ordinances causing a lot of problems. Um, an example of somebody even has, uh, we had somebody who had some additional called construction debris on their property and the neighbors were very upset. And when you go through a process like that, you issue violations and then they don't pay. And then you go to court and what happens is six months later, once you go to court, if the court will even listen to you, they clean it up the day before and they tell the judge, yep, we cleaned it up. And the judge is great. Don't ever hear about this again. You're done. And they go right back to doing it the next day. What happens? We issue a notice and then we can issue a second notice and then we can issue a third notice and then we've got to go to court. Um, somebody trying to build a McDonald's on Avril Mall is a much easier zoning enforcement issue to deal with. Uh, light pollution is a challenging zoning enforcement issue. If somebody lives adjacent to route one or adjacent to any commercial property and they say, hey, the light is bleeding into my house, that's highly subjective as to whether or not it's, um, bleeding into their house. Noise, we do have a noise regulation in town. We can actually take a decimeter and check the level of noise. There again, construction's not supposed to start, I think, either before seven or 7:30 in Norwood. So we're going to call that somebody started construction at 6:45. Appreciate that. It's 9:30. There's not much we can do now. We'll try to monitor and then that person doesn't do it again for two or three months and then it happens and it's this sort of cat and mouse game.
Another more frequent example that we see, and going back to the explanation of the role that planning board plays, plant, planning board receives applications for new development, mostly commercial development. And they'll review those plans for that new business kind of building out in town. And they'll make sure that the plans comply with the zoning requirements that you all at town meeting have set. Um, and that's on a case by case, instance by instance basis. Um, we have landscaping requirements under zoning bylaw right now. Um, evergreens, shrubs, mix of perennials, annuals, some flowering plants. Um, we like to recommend that native species be planted. Um, but when somebody comes to the planning board, they say, here's my landscaping plan. I'm going to plant all these plants. We say, okay, that's in compliance with the bylaw, but we'll condition our approval um, by saying, if any of these die, you have to replace them within so many months, you know, accommodating the planting season to make sure that it's not just in compliance when it's built, but that it continues to stay in compliance. If that's not the case, if I'm driving across town one day and I notice that all the trees planted by the street of a business that opened six months ago are dead, then I can chat to Gary over in the building department the next day and say, hey, would you mind just checking up on that and, um, talking to the owner to see if they have a plan to fix it? Um, that's, that actually happens a lot.
Yeah. Uh, decisions of the building inspector as they relate to zoning can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. That's one of their functions. But really that level of review is whether it's technically correct. It's not a decisional review. If you want to build your McDonald's on Avril Mall Road, what the ZBA is going to look at is did the building commissioner, in their opinion, follow the law? Not that, well, they disagree with them and they really want the McDonald's there, go ahead and let them do it. So some folks choose to appeal it to the zoning board, but again, it's just another level of technical review. And then from there it goes to superior court.
Yeah. I have a very specific example. I won't, I won't give addresses or anything like that. But recently I had a shed put on my property and I went through all the requirements. And as a matter of fact, on the website, this is an example of what you can't do. It's an existing building. It's in a residential area. And, uh, my assumption, and it's been there for many years. Uh, my assumption is something's going on in terms of, do you put an additional tax levy on it? Do you put a tax lien on it?
Uh, so when somebody builds, um, the building permit process, and let's be clear about that. Let's make sure they actually go and get a permit and we know about it. We are not, we're not omnipotent. We don't know every single construction project that happens. Uh, if it's a really small shed, it doesn't usually show up on the assessor's, um, map. But if you do an addition to a home, that building permit is forwarded to the assessor's office when it's completed and then your assessing card is updated, um, for whatever changes you've made.
This is a quantifier. Can hold many cars in it.
Let us know the address. We'll check.
No, it's on your website.
Oh, oh, um, Bill, you were on the board when we had that issue. That led to a zoning change, um, as an example that, um, there's a, correct, an accessory structure. What's a garage? Hey, I want to build a shed. And you say, well, we all know what a shed looks like. You go to Home Depot, they're nice. And then somebody puts a quantifier on their property. It's like, come on, this is not what anyone actually.
So did something change to allow it to happen?
No, but it was allowed when it was constructed and now it is not.
Correct.
Allowed. But it's pre-existing non-conforming. Yeah.
Oh, okay. I mean, if I was the neighbor, I'd be pretty upset.
Uh, believe me, um, neighbor disputes is a lot of what we deal with when it comes to, uh, zoning. Again, it's never that they want to build a McDonald's on Avril Mall. It's, your shed's ugly and I don't like it. I don't like the house color. And some of these things we can't actually regulate. Sometimes it is just a neighbor, um, neighbor to neighbor issue.
It's kind of an example of what, um, Mr. Mizuko mentioned earlier, when he said, you know, we kind of decide what our neighbors can do or not to. You were able to do that at the time. People didn't like it. So they created change in bylaws that now means I can't do certain things that I might've been ready to do. Like I can have an accessory building, but only certain size, maybe I wanted it to be twice as big.
And now your neighbors are protected from that too.
So we talked about the planning board. The planning board is elected. It's a five member body. And they develop planning policy around land use, economic development, housing, transportation. These are all things we factor in when we're looking at zoning. They weigh differently depending on where the area is. We're going to go over these terms in a little bit, but they, in a few minutes, they review subdivision plans, approval, not required plans, site plans and major projects. So whenever there's a big project coming to town, chances on the planning board would be reviewing that project. Uh, and again, it's really a technical and legal compliance review. It's not really a, do we like it or not like it or want it or not want it? It's, is it meeting the rules and regulations that we've set forward in a reasonable manner? Uh, next slide. Zoning Board of Appeals, five member body appointed by the Board of Selectmen. They hear and decide on applications for special permits. Certain buildings and certain constructions require what we call a special permit. We've taken a lot of the special permits from the ZBA and moved them to the planning board. Because then again, in a fully built out community, you really are looking at it in the larger context. They also, uh, hear petitions for variances. You are allowed to go to the zoning board and get a variance from the zoning bylaw. And you have to have, it's a fairly high standard. You can't just say, well, I just want to build a bigger shed because I want to build a bigger shed. There'd have to be some reason that, hey, I can't build it. Uh, you know, I have to go more than five feet next to my neighbor's house because I got a bunch of lead and lead in the yard. And, you know, that's why I couldn't build on this side. It's probably a bad example of what would happen. We did zoning a little bit differently up in northern Maine where, um, it was a little bit more flexible, but it's got to be an actual reason, not just a desire to say, I don't want to follow the zoning. And can you let me not follow the zoning?
In terms of the planning board, of the zoning board, a couple of years back, Norwood looked at, looked at downtown Norwood and talked about adding second floor setbacks, go forth and saw retail in the bottom residential. Where are we with that? Or is that still on the scope of this meeting?
No, not at all. So we passed the change to the downtown zoning bylaw. And we haven't really seen any hits yet from any commercial developers. It appears that the density allowances are not high enough to allow them to really construct and reinvest in a building and make the changes that we want. So that's probably going to come back in November or March with some recommended changes to actually achieve what we were hoping to achieve.
When you said, I'm sorry, when you say the density, you're talking about residential?
Correct.
Okay. So if they can't make money with not have enough residential settings.
Correct. And one of the challenges is we use the, um, units per acre measure. A lot of towns have run away from that and the reason being that it sounds scary when you hear 20 units per acre, but if you're familiar with all of Aty's, that building has, I think there's nine residential units in there. Its density is 43 units per acre. So when you hear 43 units by acre, you panic. You say, oh my God. But then you look at all of Aty's and you say, no, that's actually a nice building. That looks totally rational. So towns have gone away from that units per acre measure and there's different, um, different models of different towns have used. Westwood's done pretty good with some of them. Dedham's done pretty good. Some of the construction you've seen in Dedham, we'd like to see that. We're going to look at that density and you go look at the, um, uh, in the density of what you can build within the structure and also how you handle parking requirements too, uh, for the downtown zone. Route one, we changed the zoning about a year after that. And we've seen a couple of projects on route one, in particular FM Global is doing a large project. They're building a garage, tearing down their old building there. Uh, if anyone knows of the four points is FM Global actually owns the four points, the office building on route one, the research building in the back, and they own the Dedham Medical Associates building as well. They leased that out. Um, their building in front is about 70,000 square feet, uh, about 90,000 square feet. It's about a 70 year old building. They're tearing that down and building, building three times its size. So it's a significant corporate expansion. It's the type of growth and development we want on route one. We get much more tax revenue out of a R and D lab and an office building than we do out of an auto dealer or a fast food restaurant. Um, so the route one zoning has worked. We, we seem to have hit it. The downtown zoning has to come back for another look because we're not getting the hits that we wanted.
And that happens, right? Zoning is dynamic. So, um, the planning board, all the members of the community that attended all of their meetings and sessions on that central business district zoning, uh, and town meeting did a great job of putting together where previously there was no contemplation, right? Of those mix of uses and the kinds of requirements that could motivate developers to invest in our downtown, keep the parts that we love and breathe new life into others. Um, but we'd never done it before, right? And so sometimes that happens. You, you throw your best out there and you see what the market will pick up on and respond to, or the market changes at a rapid speed after that. And I think a town that's governed well by its, its residents, uh, really takes it seriously to revisit those things and keep working on perfecting them uh, and making them work for the town. And that's definitely on the, on the radar.
One quick comment again. I would think, getting back to downtown, the residential thing. I would think because housing is so, so tight nowadays, okay? Everybody's looking to someplace, especially Norwood, that some savvy developer can say, look, we can't do it with two floors. We can go with three floors and make it like a carrot. Hang it in front of you to add a layer.
We've had some of those conversations with developers and we're kind of getting that together and telling them, look, tell us what you would need to make this work. We don't want mega projects downtown. But if you look at a small building, you say, why are you going in here investing this? And a lot of them will say, it's not worth it because I can only put, you know, six units above that and I'm not going to make the money back on it. I need to be able to put nine units. Okay. You're not talking about 90. So what can we do to make that work? And then parking can be challenging too. Um, we have a surplus of parking downtown. We're fortunate. We don't want to all of a sudden give up two or 300 public parking spaces. But telling somebody, well, if you're going to put 12 units in there, you need to find 12 parking spaces. Well, if we own a parking behind the building, we own a parking on the street, you're almost never going to get a project. Sometimes you can do parking underneath, but then the cost starts to go up to the point where we're seeing what we're seeing now, which is they don't want to invest. And we want some growth. Some of the buildings downtown have reached their economic obsolescence. They're just not, not worth it. Um, those of you who've been in town for a while, probably went to the Muggin Muffin. I always used to cite that building as an example of a building that has just reached the end of its reasonable life expectancy. Uh, the owner of the Muggin Muffin used to always yell at me and tell me not to cite his, uh, his building. But it's, it's not AD compliant. It's, um, it doesn't have a modern hood band system. So you're not going to get a lot of, you're certainly not going to get residential above that. And for modern bar restaurants to want to go in there, just not necessarily going to want to do that.
All right. Thank you.
This is usually the part in town meeting where people's eyes start to roll back in their heads about zoning because it is really complicated. It's not always the, the magic bullet, right? It's density. If we just increase that density number, you know, the builders will come. It's our parking restrictions and it's how tall we allow the building and how close the buildings can be to one another. How much of the parcel we require to be open space? Like we like to have little green spaces here and there. Who doesn't love street cheese? Um, and that starts to add up. So it's really, it's a tougher bet to crack. Um, and that's why we're going to keep working on it.
So just finishing up on the zoning board, we talked about the, um, the here variances. Variances are hard to grant. It's not just, I want a variance. You have to show there's a, um, there's I think a four, uh, four way test as if I remember.
A four prime test and you have to satisfy all the criteria and they're pretty high.
Conservation Commission, another important land use board, probably the most misnamed boards in, uh, land use in Massachusetts. Conservation's kind of what they do, but what they really do is enforce and, uh, protect the local and state wetlands protection act. So areas subject to protection include banks, where we have the banks, wetlands, marshes, swamps and flats bordering a body of water. So the conservation commission is really responsible for any development that occurs within a certain distance of a body of water. Any of our wetlands. Uh, they also manage some conservation land. Towns can place land as, uh, conservation land. And what that means is that it's going to be permanently preserved and nothing can be built on it. And it usually requires a different level of maintenance. It's not just the DPW mowing the field. Um, conservation commissions can also, uh, acquire property, which only town meeting can do that, except the conservation commission can do that. One of those quirks in Massachusetts law, conservation commissions have been given the ability to acquire property. Um, and they have funds that they're able to do so. It's not significant funds, but they on their own are independently able to, um, acquire property. Then, what's that? Yeah. Well, they, they're, we hope we would all work together and, and somebody wouldn't just sort of donate or give something to the conservation commission and they would show up one day and say, by the way, we just bought a bunch of land. And it's like, oh my God, we still have to insure ourselves. Uh, but they focus on wetlands protection. We have a local wetland bylaw and a state wetlands protection act. So if you're doing a major project and you are nowhere near any water, probably not going to have to talk to the conservation commission whatsoever. The closer you are to water, the more you're going to have to talk to the conservation commission and get approval. So it's a little tough to read on the screen here, but we'll go through a few of these because these are all the words that we're always talking about. And again, they come out the town meeting and it gets a little dry. ZBA variances, the relief from soil shape, topography that creates relief from soil shape or topography that creates a hardship.
You have to establish that there's something so unique about your property and the land, soil, lot shape, size or topography that separates you from everybody else in your area and uniquely causes a hardship. Like if literal enforcement of the bylaw is enforced, then it will create a severe hardship for you because of the uniqueness of your lot. Literally can't comply with the bylaw because your property is so unique. Can you see why it's kind of a tough threshold to cross?
Uh, special permits granted by the planning board or the ZBA essential or desirable use, no undue traffic condition or impairment of pedestrian space, uh, safety, will not unduly tax the infrastructure. Um, so this is where you're allowed to do something, you need a special permit, but they're granting it because it's not likely to create any of those conditions. Uh, subdivision pans, uh, plans, subdivision plans are simply dividing a larger piece of land into smaller parcels, including creating a roadway. The easiest way to think of that is just a residential subdivision. So somebody owns 10 acres of land. You want to build a bunch of house, you go through a subdivision. That's why we call them, oh, I live in this new subdivision. It now becomes 10 parcels or 20 parcels with a little road in a cul-de-sac. It also applies to commercial properties. You may own a large parcel and you want to subdivide that parcel and create a mall or shopping or something like that.
Keep waiting for us to run out of large parcels to subdivide. And yet I still keep getting applications for them. Oh, well, we're thinking Norwood, we wouldn't have any land big enough to create the new roadway and multiple properties.
Desirable community.
Here we are. Here we are.
Uh, approval not required, which is a, um, that's when you go through like a subdivision or you, or you're dividing land, but there's nothing else that's required to be done. It complies and it doesn't require the creation of a roadway. So that might be a very simple, I own, uh, two restaurants on one parcel and I want to sell one. So I divide it down the middle, but everything otherwise meets and works just doing that. I know it sounds very governmentish that you got to go and get something that says you're not required, uh, to get something. But it just, we got to make sure everyone's following the rules.
Planning board has to endorse it, the language that we follow.
Uh, site plan approval is the process that shows a complete picture of a proposed commercial development to identify impacts in a conciliatory process. So a site plan approval would be, we can't always look at a project in isolation. And it's part of a process to look at like Moderna's campus where they're not just going to say, we want to build this one building here. And it's like, okay, this looks good, but what else are you doing? They can't say nothing, we're not doing anything. It's, there's a process you need to go through to make sure that, um, we know what else is going on. Similar to major projects, um, but a major project relies, allows, would be much larger, allows a consolidated review from the different land use boards and the different needs of a really large major project.
It allows us to consolidate. Like if you have a project that needs multiple special permits, the hospital needed multiple special permits. One for the parking garage, you know, one for rebuilding a demolished structure and a whole bunch of others. They had a major project special permit, so it was one hearing, one review process, kind of more efficient and streamlined.
Conservation Commission, we often talk about, uh, orders of conditions or notice of intent. And if that's what you submit and if your project is within the wetlands or abutting wetlands, the conservation commission may approve it with what we call a, um, order of conditions.